We have a call to an order, pledge allegiance, moment of silence. We are first going to do our regional organization meeting and then conclude with our regular business that we dispense with due to the storm. That being said, we have before us for an appointment of a temporary chairman. I'll make a motion that we appoint Brian McGuire as temporary chairman for the board and supervisors.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, so ordered. Chairman, it's all you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for the appointment of a temporary secretary.
Go ahead, C.C.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Christine as the temporary secretary.
I second. Oh, I can't second.
Okay, motion made, second.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second, yeah.
Motion is second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, so ordered.
Okay, I'm asking for nominations for appointment to chairman of the board supervisors.
I'll make a motion to appoint Henry Holman as chairman of the board supervisors.
Motion by C.C. to appoint Henry as chairman. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Motion is second to appoint Henry Holman as chairman of the board supervisors. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
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 opposed no, so move. I'll return the meeting to you now, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I thanked the board for putting another years of heavy burden on Chris's shoulders. It's not easy anymore. But that being said, at this time, we need to make a motion for a nomination for vice chairman. And I'll make a motion for nomination to C.C. Novinger to retain the chair for vice chairman of board supervisors.
I'll second that nomination.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, so ordered.
Thank you.
Okay. You have before you the roadmasters, as usual. And it is the courtesy that they extend to all three supervisors. And I'll make a motion that the three supervisors, conclusive with it or inconclusive, be listed as roadmasters for the ensuing year.
I'll second that.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, so ordered, so ordered. Secretary?
I'll make a motion that we appoint Helen as secretary for the ensuing year.
Motion made, I'll second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, so ordered, so ordered. Treasurer? Make a motion that we bring Christine on board for another year as treasurer.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, so ordered, so ordered. We have before you police chief. Do I hear a motion for the police chief for the ensuing year?
I move we name Richard Pickles police chief for the county year 2013.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, so ordered. At this time, you have Robin on the board.
Hello, good evening. I think you have a copy of the proposal in front of you.
Yes.
As far as the coverage is, there's been substantial change in the coverages. The property limits are updated, a 3% inflation increase each year. As far as the equipment schedule, on the auto schedule, Helen keeps me pretty much up to date with that, so they should all be updated. There should be a page there with the premiums on. I did go to three companies to get some alternative quotes, and the MRM package is still the best as far as premium goes. They're very good. I think we've not had any problems with them. As far as claims go, they're very well, you know, with handling the claims. They're also paying dividends. If you look at the bottom of that page with the premiums on there, the last five years, you've got some pretty substantial dividends there. And the way I understand your own schedule, you get another nice one this year. So, I don't know if there's any questions about the coverage or anything that you have for me, but my recommendation would be to stay with the MRM trust program because they, you know, as far as pricing and coverage and service goes, they are, you know, very good.
We did find a couple of questions.
Okay.
On the statement of value.
On the property?
On Pavilion 1 and Pavilion 2, they're both valued at the same price.
Okay.
But they are different sizes, and one is a lot newer than the other. Does that make any difference?
Do you know what the replacement cost on each one would be? Because basically, we took the values from like an appraisal years ago and just have been increasing 3%. So, but they can be adjusted if you feel they need to be.
I mean, for what it costs when you put up the barbecue pit is what I'm questioning. Because if, I mean, if that's being valued at 6167, is that a fair price?
About double what it costs to put it up.
Right, that's what I'm thinking of. I thought that was around $3,000.
About, but Helen, right around $4,000, I think.
Yeah.
Was it Karen, $4,000?
Mm-hmm. For that, for the year.
Okay. Like you said, it can be adjusted. That's just what we do, like each year a 3% increase. So, it is, you know, increased 3% from last year, but we can adjust that if, you know, if you feel it needs to be.
I have one question here. Take a look at this. Now, there's one that needs to be stricken off there. The Cartridge Steamwater has been gone for quite a while. And that was bid out and gone, and another one purchased for it out there. You probably don't have the information on that out there, but purchased that three years ago now, two, three years ago. I see you have a Western UTP 80 Ultramount snowplow. I don't know if that may be something that's ancient, it's no longer here with us. Or it may be one, because we don't have many Westerns putting everything's bulk out here, unless it's on the small pickup truck that was purchased, the snowplow purchased separate. But how do we handle the snowplows for the 95 Ford and the Sterling and the big snowplows? Are they included?
They're included on the.
They're included, okay. So, I guess the question was, I figured that, how did this snowplow go, where'd that come from? I really don't know. But all the other trucks have their own plows.
I'm not sure that has been on the schedule for, you know, for a number of years.
Yeah, and I got a funny figure, it's been along with the workers.
Maybe with the old pickup.
Well, that may be. That went with the pickup.
Yes.
That would be it. They sold the pickup truck, that would be it.
So, that one actually needs to come off of it.
That would have to come off of there, yes. And everything else that I see on there, except for those questions, I'm satisfied with.
And you don't have either the graders on there.
Yeah, but those two old graders out there, I guess they could put one on that old road grader out there, not worth much for the case. We didn't use it, and we purchased that new, the Uber out there for doing our roadside, it was much smaller, much more maneuverable. That's not put on here.
Okay. Helen can get me just the description.
Yeah, you'll have to give us that information, and we'll be paid for it.
Yeah.
And then, there will be the discontinuance of the Chevy Impala.
Okay.
Yeah, until we can do that, we have to keep that.
How do you care all them, Helen? As they disappear?
As they disappear.
Okay. Okay, and the Ford Crown Vectin, et cetera. Okay? Any other questions?
Perhaps it's written here, Robin, you might be going to see it. What is the effective date on this?
January 10.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, looking for approval? Subject to those changes, okay? Whether it's supposed to be a premium, I guess, let's take a look and see where we're at with that. Okay?
I'll make a motion that we go with the MRM trust for our insurance package for the ensuing year, subject to the inclusions and exclusions as forementioned.
Okay, motion made, I'll second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, so ordered. So, thank you, Rob.
I'll get that to you this week.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have before us the continuation of the appointments. At the top of the list, do I hear for township solicitor? We wish to retain Solicitor Wagner or anybody else in there.
I'll make a motion that we retain Wagner and Spreya.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Motion is second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Township engineer? Do I hear a motion?
I will make a motion that we retain Retu as our engineer for the ensuing year, and I will add at the same rate as last year.
Okay, motion made, I'll second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, so ordered. Township basist, the board chair, in the past has been Don Carpenter. I make a motion that we retain Don for another year.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Aye, so ordered. Township shore enforcement officer and alternate SEO, in the past has been Madden. Once again, I'll make a motion that we retain Madden for both of those, enforcement officer, SEO, and alternate.
I'll second that.
Okay, and also at the current rates as he has sent to us, however.
Yes.
Okay. Motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Township zoning officer and alternate. Once again, you have that before you, right here, a motion.
I move we retain Madden Engineering Services and, of course, a enforcement officer and alternate at the rates proposed in that.
Okay, I'll second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Aye, so ordered.
I'm sorry, was that for zoning or sewage?
Both.
Pardon?
Both.
Both.
Can you tell me what he was charging for zoning?
It's $65 per hour for the alternate and $85 per hour for the zoning officer.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, township uniform construction code inspection agency, it's the past, it's been Glace, and once before, before, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion we retain Glace.
Okay, motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Who's second?
I have it. Pardon?
Who's second?
I'll second it.
Excuse me. Okay, motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, so ordered. Pen Township Municipal Authority, appointment to, on the board?
C.C.
Okay, make a motion to make the appointment for C.C. to serve on the board again if she wishes.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Aye, so ordered. Pen Township Park and Recreation Board?
Mike Freeman.
Okay, that's Mike Freeman up, and he's for what, five-year term?
Um, yes. Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Mike Freeman to, because it will be another five-year term, continuation.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Right to know, officer?
No, Uniform Board of Appeals member.
Ah, that's.
No, you're looking at your old one.
Cool.
That's okay. That is Bill Warner, for a term of three years.
That was a new one this morning.
Yes, it was, because they just had their meeting last Thursday.
Okay. Pen Township Uniform Construction Code Board of Appeals, what is the wish of the board?
I'll make a motion we reappoint Bill Warner to his three-year term, UCC Board of Appeals.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Right to know, officer, and make a motion, once again, we give that job to Helen.
I'll second that.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, so ordered.
Okay, Brad, Paulo, and Bob Schaefer, Sr., agreed to be elected auditors.
Okay.
Gigi McDade was elected through the election process, but she has moved out of the township.
Okay.
And she has not sent us her letter of resignation yet.
Okay.
Got away with that. I had to talk to Rich.
Okay, we need to forward that information, and how to go back to that, and the resignation from her regarding that.
She's been sent two letters.
Two letters, and hasn't responded.
Has not responded.
Okay, now, Bob Schaefer and.
Brad.
Brad, okay. I'll make a motion that the elected auditors, since they did run, will make the appointment.
They have to be appointed.
We, Rob Schaefer and Brad, the.
Paulo.
I'll second that.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, so ordered. Cumberland Perry County Task Force representative and alternate.
Brian was last year, and I was alternate.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we retain Brian as the same, and Helen as the alternate.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, so ordered. Capital Tax Collection Bureau, representative and alternate.
Me and Susan.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we retain Helen and Susan.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, so ordered. Perry County Tax Collecting Committee, representative and alternate.
Me, C.C., and you, in that order.
What is the wish of the board?
I move we retain Helen, C.C., and Henry as Perry County tax collector, representative and alternate.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, so ordered. Depositories. Okay, you have before you in the present time, Pliggett, Oars Town Bank is depositories. I'm making a motion that we continue with those two.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, so ordered. You have the for you for wages, salary, and hiring. Okay, Helen has the 2012 rate for the employees at the President of Township. You have before you the graduation of a scale of 2%, 3%, or 4% increase, what's been budgeted for those items, and et cetera. Okay? What is the wish of the board? In regards to ground pay for the employees.
Oh. No, no, that's right. Never mind. No, 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 no. 70, 30.
Want to get on the board one at a time?
However you want it.
No.
No?
No. I'll make a motion that we grant a 2% wage increase for each of the positions listed.
Question?
The only question I have, does the 2% fall within the guidelines of what was agreed with the Duncan Permit for the increase of wages for the officers?
I don't think so.
That was a separate contract.
That was a separate contract.
Okay, so, and that part right there would be.
With the exclusion of the police.
Okay, and tax collector?
Yes, that's a person, that's something.
Okay, that's a different one. That's from the board.
Oh, yeah, I did say that the wrong, sorry.
Tax collector, and for the.
Police chief and the captain.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
The, and the part of the most there's.
Oh, they're also part of the, part of the contract.
Yeah.
So, that's for seven positions.
One, two, three, four, five, six, yes.
What is the wish of the board? Satisfied with the inclusions and the exclusions. You have before you secretary, treasurer, custodian, and highway, full-time, part-time, groundskeeper, and the tax collector, who suffered one with Barb Hamilton.
Yes.
Requested to go from 4% to 5%, which is common across all the other municipalities, I believe, except us.
So, it's 2% that is seven positions?
Yes.
That's my motion.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, so ordered. I bring before you for the tax collector, is the wish of the board to increase the tax collector's percentage, as her request was made quite a while ago, to set it at 4% for collecting to 5%.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion made.
I'll second the motion.
Motion with a second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, so ordered. Let it be noted that in regards to several hours that I take that was appointed to me several years ago to take care of the highway department, that is not listed on there. Those hours are set by the auditors in the township and not this board. It cares little to me whether they reduce it, but I ask for no increase when you go before the audit board for that position. Okay, business managers, points of contact.
Last year, Henry had highway and police, C.C. had planning commission and authority, and Brian had the office and park and rec.
Make a motion that there is no objection to that, to retain them as section.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
You have before you the set mileage rate, if you take a look at it, a small increase, I recommend that we leave it where it was since last year, Helen.
Okay.
Okay?
At 55.5 cents per mile.
Yeah, 55. I don't think we used it once last year, do we?
Uh, yes, Steve used it once to go get something for the pavilion.
Okay.
Yeah.
He runs.
He runs his own truck.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Aye, so ordered. Okay, if that was incidentally, if he was working for that, he was working for the rec board and not for the board supervisor.
Yeah.
Okay?
But he still used it.
Yeah, okay, I understand. Tax levy, okay?
Yes, nothing's changed from last year, we just have to set it each year. And you have the list of fire hydrant and school, I'm sorry, streetlight taxes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion we adopt resolution 2013-01 for the ensuing year.
Okay, I'll second that. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Aye, so ordered. Fee schedules before you.
Okay, I have given you the fee schedule. There are a couple of changes I'm requesting. Under the building permits, the township administrative fee to increase it to $12. That fee was supposed to cover the time it takes me to process the permits. It, $5 does not do that. It takes me at least an hour to process the permits from getting them in to issuing them. I'm sorry, a half hour. And that would cover that. Then, under, what page here? Page four, the water feasibility report application. I talked to our engineer or two, and they recommended we have a $50 administrative fee, and then any, they would pay what the cost was for the actual review by the person doing the review, and then in and out. Zoning permits, we've had the zoning permit at $50 up and to, from the beginning until now. We are being charged $65 for each permit, for him to issue it. So, I'm requesting that that would go, be increased to 65 to cover it. That's the way it was set up to be. It would cover his costs. And also, changing the alternate zoning officer to 65 to go with their fee schedule. And that is it.
That's all of them, Helen?
That's all of them.
Okay. You see, an increase from 5 to 12, an increase on the zoning?
On the zoning and the water feasibility application.
And the water feasibility, okay. What is the wish of the board for adopting those fees?
Make a motion that we adopt the fee schedule with those changes.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, so ordered. Okay.
Okay.
Meeting dates, 2000.
Okay, the meeting dates are basically the last Wednesday of every month for you guys. My question is, one Saturday, do you, I'm sorry, the roadmaster, the road survey you do in March, do you wish that to be on the 23rd, which is the fourth Saturday? Isn't that when the barbecue is?
Yes.
That's the same day as the barbecue?
What, 23rd?
Yes, you wish to have it that day? And December, meeting, the last Wednesday is Christmas Day, so.
I would recommend in March that we go with the 23rd, A, because it's the barbecue, and B, the 30th is Easter weekend.
Okay.
And everybody's okay with the Christmas meeting?
They, you gotta set the.
Thursday?
Thursday, December 26th is what I put down, but.
Yep, that's fine.
Okay, I make a motion that we adopt the proposed meeting dates.
Okay.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Tax collector audit?
You've been having the elected auditors do that?
Mm-hmm.
What's your wish?
Okay, we have the elected auditors doing that. I make a motion that we continue with letting them do that audit for the tax collect.
Okay.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, so ordered.
Okay.
Invoice report.
You, okay, you have the end-of-year invoice report. That includes all the bills that were paid with December. You'll notice there is one check that has been voided, that was pulled out for payment later, correct?
Yes.
To be reissued.
End of January.
Yeah. I would also like to request that for Capitol Blue Cross, being their payment date, is set on the first day of every month with our meeting time, if we can switch that from paper check to an electronic check option, this way I can be sure they get their payment on time.
Okay, what is the wish of the board?
First of all, I'll make a motion that the orders be drawn and the bills be paid.
Paid. I'll second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, so ordered.
I'll also make a motion that we change the Blue Cross provision.
Blue Cross.
Blue Cross, thank you. The Blue Cross payment from paper check to an ACH.
I'll second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, so ordered. Okay, we have the for you, the treasurer's report. I see that we have one CD.
Yes, we do. It's our last park and rec CD with Oars Town is up for maturity on the 19th of this month. Currently have a little over $5,500 in it. Landisburg is showing .15%. Marysville is showing .2. Members First is not an option, neither is Orstown. I would recommend switching it over to Marysville.
Okay.
My baby pardon.
Do I hear them?
I'll make a motion that we move that six-month CD to Marysville.
Okay.
Question, isn't it already at Marysville?
Yeah, that's one at the end of the month. That was what I stuttered over. Go above it by two, Brian.
It should be highlighted on your.
Oh, I'm sorry, I see it here. Thank you, pardon.
Okay, motion made. All those, do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
And we have before us the approval for the treasurer's report.
Make a motion, we accept the treasurer's report subject to audit.
Okay, I'll second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Okay. Since we're underneath that order of business over there, I have something that I would also like to bring out underneath the business matters in the township. I would like to put a motion before the board. And I think that, I asked the board for consideration on this. I've always said that I thought the citizens group letter could have merit. But when I see different articles come out, that there's no element of truth to them at all. And I think it's time this township board responds to them. When you see items that says we have $150,000 for road maintenance, brother, I wish. Don't I wish? No truth to that statement at all. $35,000 for culvert replacement. No truth to that at all. I got 30 for all my road maintenance to try to make it due. We do try to pay at least $150,000 worth of road of our liquid fuels account. And that's not stretching township budget. That's money that comes in that we have now designated strictly for that. There's a lot of other items in this last one. I can sit here and review them at a later date, we will, and whatnot. But I'd like to put it before the board in the form of a motion that we reply back to the website, to the citizens group with all the corrections that we see in that. And we put it on the website that these corrections are made. Cable TV and, and of course, the direct lines of citizens groups. Minutes at the meeting and open discussion on these at this meeting that they are corrected, made part of our minutes on the corrections of what's coming out of the newsletter that's not separate. And in our semi-annual newsletter that these corrections are sent out so that all the residents, whether they have a website, computers or whatnot, at least get it in the mail. These issues are fine. They're okay to be put there as long as they're truthful and they're correct. But many of them are not. Do I hear a motion? I made the motion. I'm asking for a second that we follow that policy here through the ensuing year.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. So ordered. Helen, we'll sit down and work that out as a board to see where we're going with it. And we need to take them and we need to follow up on that because I've seen too much of it. Thank you for that consideration. Recognition of visitors is this time. We're now getting into our regular order of business. Okay?
Mr. Gauss. Mr. Melham. Mr. Hollenbaum.
I just have a question, foreign reference to non-revenue township to say has tax implications for free profiling tactics. When you collect the LST tax, do you deposit that into the general fund or a special fund?
That goes into the general fund.
Cool. Well, it's me.
Mel left. Barry and Mary Jane Schaefer, did they leave? Okay. Lisa? Jody?
Not at this time.
Bob Johnson?
Not at this time.
Stanley?
Not this time.
Rock? Burkheimers have left. Lisa left. So Jordan. Okay, um, Jim is gone. And Karen, Rob is gone. That's it. Who I miss?
Okay.
That's it.
Uh, this time we were into some old business. PSAP's convention. Those who wish to attend, you have the dates and the information before you. If you have any interest in going to that convention?
Not to the convention itself, but on Sunday, there's two trainings. Two half-day trainings that I like to attend. One's the Uniform Construction Code Enforcement Actions and the other is dealing with devastation. How to effectively plan for your township response. I have to renew my building code official this year and these are two I can use.
Okay, are they cost worthy or are they with the convention?
They're, they're cost worthy. Both of them are 65 each. That's 130.
And that will renew you and keep you certain.
That will get me there.
I make a motion that we grant the fee and payment for Helen to go to the convention for that schooling.
Okay, that's on the Sunday before.
Question on the motion.
Okay.
Do you also need to register for the convention?
No.
Be able to go to the course?
No.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. So ordered.
Uh, now the convention is actually over our, from April 21st to the 24th, which is over our meeting week. Therefore, it'll be almost impossible for me to be able to attend. Not with what I have to get done before the meetings. Does anyone else want to go?
What, do you care to go?
I can go, go.
Okay. Okay, Helen?
Okay. Okay.
We have before you the Perry County Convention for February 21st, last Saturday.
It's the 23rd.
Third, yeah.
Yes.
23rd, yeah.
Yes, this is the 100th anniversary, 100th year anniversary of it. So there's a little bit different program. I'd like to go to it.
I'd like to go to it.
Brian?
I'd like to go also.
And then 10 last year of the year before, but 100th year, I'd like to try it again, Helen.
Okay.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to pay the $15 fee per person to attend the convention for all supervisors?
And the annual dues.
Pardon?
And the annual dues.
And the annual dues, yes.
And they are.
35, yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion made.
I'll second.
Second, all those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. So ordered. Perry County Municipal Planning Support Service.
Okay, this is where they're asking us if we want them to be our planning service. They, if, we have not done this yet. If they do do it, then they want us to decide whether we want them at like every meeting or only when we call on them. In the past, you've asked me if they will re-review plans once it's gone through the county the first time. They won't unless you belong to this.
Once it's gone through the county the first time?
Well, every plan that's submitted to the, us, is submitted to the county.
Right.
They do that.
Right.
They review it. If we want them to review revisions.
Oh, revisions.
Then we'd have to do this. That's when it came up once, but that's the answer to that question. It's how we get them to do a review of a revision.
And that's a $1,000 fee?
That would be.
Putting the page three?
Page three. A less frequent on-call agreement can be made for 500. Which is what I would recommend if we did that. It came up with under the water and properties plans, that question whether they would review a revision.
Is there a need for like an annual contract to do that or can they be contacted on an as-needed basis?
What Jason told me is if we have to have a contract, the part-time contract, even on an as-needed basis. If they don't, we don't have this support contract, they won't do it.
There's been no participation from us in the past.
No, no, no. It just, a question came up during the year.
Okay.
So I'm giving you the information.
Okay, what is the wish of the board? Do I hear a motion? I make a motion that we dispense with not being involved with that Helen for another year as in the past.
Okay.
Okay?
I'll second that.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Relatively expensive.
Yes.
PSAP dues.
Yes. You see the list. Under the emergency management, we're going to take off Paul on the subscription. We, we have done the township news, the CDL program renewal fee, the legal defense partnership, and our dues are based on population. No. And from the 1,200, I subtract another 125. So it'd be 1135.
45.
45? Yeah, 45.
I'll make a motion that we pay our PSAP's dues for various expenses in the amount of 1145.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Ayes have it. So ordered. Duncan and Fire Police?
This is, last year we allocated $100 to them. Under the budget, we have in the non-governmental contribution, which is where we take that money from, we've had budgeted for 200. Whether you wish to know? Is there information there?
I make a motion that we continue the same donation, the fire police, as we did last year, of $100.
Okay.
Okay?
I'll second.
Second, all those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Okay, we have before you the Duncan EMS donation. What is the wish of the board? As far as the increase, holding where it's signed or that's separate?
I'll make a motion that we give the EMS a 2% increase that can be in line with our wage increase. Would be an increase of 29131, if my figures are right.
Okay, that's in form of motion. I'll second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Okay, we have before you the Duncan EMS donation, the fire company donation. I took a different look at this this year and wondered if it could be done in another way in regards to donation. After checking out, found out that it's perfectly okay, that it's legal, and it is nothing that's done out of the way that's undermining anything other than maybe a benefit to give more for the dollar. If one wants to take a look at the percentage of what our donation is at the present time, it comes out to $1,300 if it's 2% like you've done across the board. The price of diesel fuel is 3.02 cents a gallon.
Under our contract.
Under our contract.
3.02 dollars.
Yeah, 3.02. $3 and 2 cents.
Yeah.
Okay. We have $1,300. You divide that, it comes out to 430 gallons of diesel fuel. They go to the pump, they're paying the higher price. So actually, for the same amount of dollars that the township would provide and give to them, they would get more fuel underneath a program like that. Okay? Fuel to come out of our tank out here. The fuel to be monitored and measured out in gallons in witness to two people must be a supervisor and one of the police officers. There will be a record kept of it as to what goes out. I would make a recommendation that if you donated 450 gallons of fuel to them, that would be equal to an increase of 1,359. That would be better than them paying $4 a gallon or 3 something for it at the pumps. And I offer that as a motion to the board of supervisors. I've done the labor work on it, the paperwork on it and took a look at it. I would hope they would consider that. If not, they need to take a look at it on order, an alternate in regards to a donation to the fire company.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion been made. Second, all those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Everybody fully understand that proposal. We'll go forward here with the board.
No. So you're giving your normal dollar amounts plus 450?
No.
Just for 450 gallons?
Yes, that are price of oil.
Okay.
Which is $3.02 instead of them paying $3 or $4 for it, you know, elsewhere. You see it on sayings, Lisa?
Is that different than the money that, the check that you normally cut for the fire company?
Well, that can be a different, but that would only be an increase to what they're getting at the present time on the proposal. That's not their total donation, no. That would be an increase to their donation based on the $65,000, 2% of that.
Okay, so they get $65,000 cash.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
And 450 gallons of diesel fuel.
Diesel fuel.
At your cost from your tank, witness.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Now, question on that $65,000. Is there a stipulation on any or all of that for their capital reserve as before?
Last year was $25,000 to their capital reserve.
Yeah, that, that stipulation, the capital reserve that they've had presently underneath their purchase of their new trucks, signed away that they can only be used for that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, because that, that paperwork came in here.
Yeah.
Where they can purchase that, they had a guarantee, their capital reserve money for the, for the rest of the way out. So that capital reserve money that is going into them, the 25, is still guaranteed. They can only use it for that purpose.
Now, the fuel can be used anywhere they go?
What's that?
The fuel that they're getting, the 450 gallons, that can be used anywhere they go. You're not, I assume you're not asking them to just use it in the township?
Yes, it's going to be, if you give, if you give them a dollar value of the same amount, they pump it in and go wherever they're called. So, you know, how, how do you differentiate? You know, it's kind of hard to say that they get a real bad emergency over their trucks for a bridge that they can't cross the bridge.
Right.
You know, it's, okay.
Do we need to act on the $65,000 donation?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And I offered that as an increase to them for this year instead of holding it maintained because I know fuel is a big item. It is for me as well as everybody else. Okay, the motion has been proved for the 450 gallon as an addition based on 2% of the $65,000. Therefore, I make a motion that we make the same donation we did last year on the cash value of the $65,000 to the fire company.
I'll second that.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
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 Ayes have it.
Are we locked into that $3.02 for a second?
Yes, we are. Till June.
Till June.
Till June 2013 and then we'll get another.
Right.
Contract.
So that would be adjusted if the price did go up in June?
What's that?
The price of the donation could be adjusted
Well.
if the price of the fuel goes up in June.
That's correct, and I assure you that by June, they'll probably have it burnt. It'll probably be gone because $450 ain't going to fill too many of them big trucks up that hold hundreds. Be gone in a minute. You stove plow a night, you burn 40 gallons, one truck. Just getting through the night. They're small compared to that. So, that's, to answer your question, yes, I'm hoping that they do it before the end of, of June. Take that volume and get it. We don't need to bother with it for the rest of the year. Okay? Okay, you have perk happen, occupational ordinances?
Yes, these are to amend them.
Yes.
So that there is a exemption level of the poverty level, federal poverty level. All I'm asking tonight is authorization to advertise.
Okay. After reviewing that, I think that it's only fitting proper to the, to the residents that this be changed. And I have an offer that we give, a motion, Helen, the opportunity to advertise this for ordinance number 2012 to be changed, okay?
Yes, it'll be numbered.
As to the, as to the change. Up to the change date?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, yes.
Thirteen.
I'll second that.
Motion made with a second, all those in favor give their consent by saying aye. I have, so.
Okay.
Humane Society before you.
Okay, this is whether, one, you want to enter the agreement with the humane society like we have. There's a non-refundable contract fee of two hundred and fifty dollars. They are not asking us for any escrow amount. If we do not put an escrow amount in, they will charge us per animal that is taken down. They still, residents will still have to come to us to get a form and fill out and all that.
Okay. Okay, what is the wish of the board?
I'll make a motion that we pay the two hundred and fifty dollar.
Contract fee.
Okay, motion made, I'll second, all those in favor give their consent by saying aye. I have, so.
Question, Henry?
Yes.
What did we do last year?
About fifteen hundred dollars worth, Lee.
Yeah, but what, as far as the, did we do a two hundred and fifty dollar contract with them last year?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we're basically going the same we did last?
The only difference is they're not asking us for an escrow.
Deposit money escrow. They're going to get billed for it now, instead of them using our. Okay?
Okay, so we didn't do an escrow before?
No, we did escrow before, they requested it. Yes, they requested it, last year, it was reduced from the year before, and this year, they're not asking for any.
How much usage was there?
Pardon?
How much usage of that?
Fifteen, fifteen or sixteen hundred.
Yeah, I took a look at it, hell, right around fifteen hundred dollars for the usage of that, that was deposited in the escrow from last year, that's how much was you. There's another item for that particular item, for three thousand dollars in the budget this year.
Which would be half the.
Pardon?
Which would be half the residents and half the police.
That's right.
And dog warden, we get to pay for him.
Doesn't all go for, got to be split up. Okay? New business minutes before you?
Okay, you have November twenty-eighth, November twenty-ninth Morrison, and the November twenty-ninth divert conditional use ended December twenty-sixth.
Okay, what is the wish of the board? The minutes before you? You wish to vote on separately or collectively for approval?
I will make a motion to accept November twenty-eighth and both of the November twenty-ninth. I was not here for December twenty-sixth, so I will not act on those.
Okay.
Okay, motion been made to vote on those two dates, and I'll second that. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
I have, so, leaving us the minutes of December the twenty-sixth, okay? For approval, I'll make a motion that we approve those minutes, do I hear a second?
I second that motion.
Motion made with a second, all those in favor give their consent by saying aye, abstain?
I will abstain.
For the reason you have, okay, thank you. Have before you the highway report. Everybody's got off of their winter vacation and hunting, and days off, and weeks off. We're back and forth, of course, we've had some snow, couple little snowstorms, a lot of slippery stuff out there. We had our salt delivery to bring us up to date on that, and as we used a good bit of it. You get those small snows, it takes an awful lot of skid, an awful lot of salt, there's not enough supplies, but they have to be, try to be kept in decent shape. We hauled replacement last Thursday for our antiskid out of Camp Hill Prison tomorrow, going to be two trucks running. Tom and I will be both hauling tomorrow to get our bin out here for a whole gallon, before the next one hits us. We used an awful lot of skid this last time, we were down into only about four or five truckloads left. So, the need for condition out here that I've been trying to get in the past is one of those things that we need to take a look at. And I have liked to ask the board in regards to that for consideration, when we take a look at it, or at least mention it, that is, I asked for a request, capital products, capital reserve projects should be designated and asked for out of capital reserve. It's been excavated out there, it is ready to have the concrete poured, and the concrete block put up, and the roof put over, for additional salt shed, and for our anti-skid. We can over double capacities without opening out there, we have some money in it, I thought we'd get it poured last year, weathered and permitted, busy with a lot of other things. But I would like to ask the board for approval, that we take a look at, instead of be terms of capital reserve. I don't think it'll, I, budget numbers, I'm going to ask for five more than what I really think I need. I'm going to ask for twenty thousand dollars to be designated out of the capital reserve for an additional building out there. May happen, may not, depends how busy we get. But I'd like to see that at least poured out there this year, and block walls get up. So, I don't know, the wish of the board, whether they wish to take any of that money out of there, or continue on operating the way we are. What is the wish of the board?
I'll make a motion that we take twenty thousand from capital reserve, transfer that to, if it's just the only, highway department?
We can leave it in the capital reserve and just designate and pay that out.
Or the salt shed.
Yes.
That's correct, you could designate it for it, doesn't say it's coming out.
Okay.
Just trying to make the money available, get the job done if we get there. Okay?
I move that we earmark twenty thousand.
Okay.
Second motion.
Motion made with a second, all those in favor give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
And thank you for that, that was one of the most difficult things that I've had to do. Prior to me stepping down as board supervisors last year, one of the things I fought for six months was get the existing shed out there that's here now. And that was a real dogfight. Prior to that, our salt, our centers, and everything laid out in the weather, year in and year out. Froze, wet, soaked, couldn't get it through the spreaders. And I was glad to see that that finally got done, that was completed after I left, but it was started before I left. So we do need the extra room out there, folks, we're getting more ice, not as much snow, and the ice takes more anti-skid on the road to keep it down. When you run out, you've got trouble, you just don't drop and deliver stuff, yes, Jody?
Question on that, is that a bid item, or how are you going to handle that? Why wasn't it included as part of the budget process this fall?
Okay, there is some money in there, Jody, for building out there in the budget, okay? The block work and some of the other items out there will be bid out. What we can do ourselves proportionally out there, as far as getting concrete poured, getting forms in, getting the base ready, and whatnot. The rebar, the block out there, we're not going to try to do that, get that up and the walls up, that will be bid out when the time comes.
So what was, what was the dollar amount that was allocated for the building already?
Well, I have twenty-five in out there for the lean-to, that's on the shed of the building out there, plus for over there, okay?
Okay.
Doesn't say, I didn't get to it last year, and we got swamped, but I'm going to try again this year. And so, I've just asked in case, that I cannot meet that money at the capital reserve. We didn't, for the rest of the buildings out there, we have planned this year, there's nothing to come out of the capital reserve. Tonight, I thought, I better, I better ask for it, so that there can be an earmark for that money, that it can be used for that.
So this twenty is over and above the twenty-five?
Yes, and I don't think that I'm going to need the twenty, or a portion of it, but we'll do it as best we can.
Okay, I'm just asking, because I know Karen had submitted something under parking rec, and it was after the budget process that kind of got.
No, that was during the budget process.
Right, right, but it was too late in the game to give it into the budget before it was time to advertise and actually talk about it, that's why I was asking.
And such, what was that? That was a proposal out there for a cost.
Concession stand.
Yeah, concession stand, the. Pardon, yes. And to get it in the budget to that, and I haven't heard back from the rec board, I think the price has knocked the boner ears for what they wanted to do out there, and whether it's even conceivable to do.
We're still looking at it.
Still looking at it, right, I know, and I haven't heard anything back from you in regards to that. Yes.
What, Henry, what would then, or what is the current dollar amount in the capital reserve?
What is it, how long, hundred and what? What's in the C D?
I'm looking, give me a minute, I don't have that off the top of my head.
There's a C D in there that has it tied up at the present time, John. Okay?
Okay. One oh-two. One forty-three, two forty-five, and some odd left.
Okay.
Two hundred and forty-five thousand in CDs.
Is this for one building or two buildings?
What's that?
Is this for one building or two buildings?
Okay, there was budget of money put in the budget, lean for on the end of the building out there, so that we can get the greater, and some of our equipment in, not just the lean-to building on the west end of the existing garage. Okay? That budget money was put in there for twenty-five thousand dollars in the budget, it was in there last year, okay? And so you do the best you can, throw it out there. And when you're going to do that, no, we're not going to bid that out, because the, you can't, I don't believe that you can take the labor that we have and the part-timers and put it out through the bid process. I'd gladly bid it if you want, but I mean, it's not required to bid it because of the current amounts that's out there, because you'll have a budget number of what it's going to cost. Already got a budget number on the trusses for the lean-to end, eight hundred twenty-five dollars, pre-engineered trusses, delivered and put in place.
Is this one building or two buildings that we're talking about?
Okay, I said, the one on the left end of the building over there, and then the area that's excavated out beside the salt shed. Now, it's been excavated out of there for that reason. That excavation started some years ago, and for that purpose, they got halfway through it, and they terminated the operator and the project. I had nothing to do with it, I wanted it. But that got stopped. And so we come back, and got it re-dug out, okay? And now got the area big enough to make, before they only went halfway back. Now you have full length, this full depth of that building out there that will match it on that side lane.
And then this is doubling our salt capacity?
It's a double, double your salt and your anti-skid capacity. It's always a problem out there when you get a heavy snowstorm, like one year, we went, you know, run out here like forty hours straight till we quit. And we were done, we had two truckloads left in that bag. We immediately pulled plows off and hauled for the next three days, two trucks, out of Camp Hill, to get that salt shed filled back up. What you get over there, the antiskid is free, it's at no cost. Antiskid's not cheap either. So you may as well take advantage of that over there like a lot of other municipalities do.
Agree.
Okay?
Question on, since the escrow within the capital reserve fund shows the actual available balance, is the available balance, the capital reserve minus the escrow of the twenty thousand, so that reflects properly on the books?
Say that again, please?
Well, you say you have two hundred and forty-five thousand in the capital reserve.
Yes.
So, Henry's asking to set aside of that capital reserve, twenty thousand within the capital reserve. So you don't have two hundred and forty-five thousand in the capital reserve, you should escrow the twenty thousand, so our real balance of two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
So that shouldn't be done?
Yeah.
You could do it, it's still there. If I don't use it, I don't use it.
But it comes down to, there's only availability because you've actually set aside the twenty thousand, so the capital reserve only has available two hundred and twenty-five thousand now. Technically, now, and if you don't use it, then certainly you can bring it back and reduce the income.
It's paperwork, Lee.
Well, it's an audit transaction, you know?
Okay, so I made that request for that reason.
Yeah, yeah, I just had to think it through.
So if I can just get clear, okay, I'm, so at the end, so you're actually going to add two compartments with two construction sites to this existing shed, one on one side and one on the other side?
Nope.
No.
Because the question was asked, but you're adding two buildings.
Two separate buildings, not, not, not two, not two buildings for the salt, for the skid.
We're adding on to the skid shed.
They just divide.
And then we're going to add on to the garage also.
Okay, oh, on to the garage, that's right.
Yes, on the west end of it there, put a lean-to out there like they put a lean-to on the other end to get equipment in.
So in the budget, in the budget, you designated twenty-five thousand for those two projects?
I put twenty-five thousand dollars in there for building improvements, or whatever it says out there, building, to be used either way. If I run out of money on twenty-five grand for the pair of them, I just needed a cushion to bring it up, that I could get the excess out of capital reserve for the capital.
I was just trying to follow the process.
Yeah, okay, that should be, because you're not going to spend twenty-five thousand on a lean-to. Not at all. But concrete's a hundred, hundred and some dollars a yard, you're going to pull, I have the figures out there, what the concrete's going to cost to support down there. You're going to have to get someone to lay up a twelve-inch block with the rebar down through them, and centers poured, so that you have a solid wall, so that the bank don't push them in. But the need's there, believe me. The need is there. Okay. The highway report, I have that on there. I've finished with that, I made that request there. We replaced a couple stove plow blades out here, that we've got, got down to the point, before you wear into the plow, we've replaced those here the last day or two. And of course, as always, you're glad you got the extra truck out there, because during that one snowstorm, when you're busy, busy, alternator decides to quit, and you just don't drop and go get one, thank God, we had the other trucks sitting there. So, parked one, got the other one in there. Had the alternators back on, and that truck was used in the second snowstorm. That's all I have to operate on the offer on the highway department. Continue out here, getting our skid in, and making preparations for roadwork here in the coming year. We're still cutting brush in the end, grinding Christmas trees out here, you don't know which way to turn to beat all the meats. Every day, it's a busy, busy time out there. Anybody wants to come and help, you're welcome. I'd be glad for the volunteers, keeps things moving. Anybody would like to come out and spend a day with us, feel welcome, you're more than welcome. Penn Township Planning Commission?
Okay, the module for the Morrison Incorporated is before you, for approval of the resolution, and also to send it to D E P. Planning Commission reviewed it, and they're content.
Okay. I'd like to offer several comments in regards to this. Not only do things get twisted up a little bit in regards to citizens group, you have that in-house. I reviewed the minutes that came from the municipal party over there, after I addressed the municipal party. After Solicitor Wagner, Mr. Bun, Mr. Morrison, Mr. Melvin and I met over here in the room, trying to try to resolve this, to see what you had to do to get this done, did we not? Did we not? Hmm? Okay, I think that is part of the minutes, we met. And it was quite argumental, as to how to try to get this thing resolved. And finally, at the end, I had all the information, everything we wanted, and in that, we agreed what you had to do, Rock, to get this done. Problem being, your building down here, that you build a building without necessary permits, ended without an occupancy permit, and now, all of a sudden, we got to have a, this D E P mailer mailed in, which was one in originally before, and expired, and et cetera, a long story told. But this all started back, clear back in, in two thousand nine, and you picked up the permit for it, and et cetera, and so we're. And you picked up the permit for it and et cetera, and so we're this far down the road with nothing being done as far as connecting into Kingler Store Plan according to your plan. I give Mr. Mellem credit, you guys did get a plan out there, and quick, a lot quicker than everybody thought we could that night. It's in our hands with the mailer to go in. When I review the minutes with the municipal authority, I find that there was no mention that that meeting was ever made with Solicitor Wagner, you and I, and the discussion of a timeframe to get this project done. Since we went from two thousand nine to now, with nothing moved. Okay? Well, there's, I know, I know, you're going, I've, I've heard it back and forth and I'm not going to, I'm going to say what I have to say and make motion here to send the mailer and get it in. But I have corrections to be made with the municipal authority on the minutes, which I will bring up to the municipal authority next time because I disagree what was approved in the municipal authority. There's some misstatements in there, misunderstandings, and I pulled it all out of the records today. I will take that to municipal authority for correction. It's not, there's more than just concerns you, Rock, okay? Not being said, we have the mailer before us, we have your plans over here, and we have your design over here to go into DEP. Okay? I was a little bit disappointed to see that the agreement you have with the municipal authority does not have a timeframe on for you to complete this project. But then I go back in, we dig through the municipal authority records and what they have on books, and you have a hundred and eighty days from the date of issue of that permit, from that permit, to have that project completed. That is part of their rules and regs that's in force. Okay? Here we are, two thousand nine, okay? They brought it up today, Helen has a copy of it, Solicitor Wagner reviewed it, and the whole nine yards. This DEP mailer is back, Rock. And you want to get your plan recorded, which I have nothing to do with. When your plan's recorded, then it's approved, and that original agreement you had for us to do nothing but put the footers in goes away. And we have no guarantee except these couple items that you're going to do this project. Now, everybody else that lives in a home down here gets a notice from the township, and Lee, you were involved with that. You put leans against your place and whatnot, and nobody likes to see that. Properties have been served, nobody likes to see that, I'm not saying that's going to happen to you. But the mailer is to go in tonight, and we'll go in tonight, and it'll be signed by this board supervisor, I'll make a motion to have fact, I don't think they're going to deny it. I asked if Solicitor Wagner there tonight, and he said, yes. We can impose a timeframe on this to get this project done, and that's what I'd like to see done. Then it all goes away, Rock, you got what you need, you can continue with your development, you can build your offices, you can do everything that you have proposed. So therefore, to request the municipal authority and recommendation of Solicitor Wagner, I make a motion that we sign the mailer, forward to DEP, and subject the approval of that mailer from DEP backed us. Usually it takes you about thirty days, you'll get it back. I've seen it before many a time, so I just want to take it, Rock.
The only thing that I can say, Henry, if you don't have a problem with the timeframe on this, whenever we get the, whenever it comes back to DEP, because I have no idea how long that will take.
Okay, I make a motion also that we mail this mailer in, and we put the hundred and eighty days on it in concurrence with what the, the municipal authority has over here to have this project completed. So, yes, Mr. Mellem?
Point of clarification, are you sending out the mailer or the planning modules?
Pardon?
Are you?
Module.
A module, yes.
That's what I'm saying, not the mailer, the module.
Yeah, yeah, we're going to mail by then.
There is no mailer at this point.
It's a module.
That's right, your mailer was in and they're going to accept the one that you got, that's correct.
That's right.
And that was, that was one that, we had a letter back that expired after sixty days. We have that letter here. But now, due to changes law, you don't need to redo another mailer.
I'm just, was questioning with respect to your use of the word mailer.
Okay, well, mailer, uh, but that, your module will be sent in, and I make a motion that we approve that module and send it in. And the project is subject to the hundred and eighty days to be completed at the time of approval.
Of mailer?
Of mailer.
A module.
Module, yes.
When you say project is completed, you mean a per or permitted?
What's that?
Completed or permitted? Completed or permitted?
Permitted from who? They've already reviewed your plans, you're saying permitted from DEP, correct? DEP is going to take a look at it, then approve this.
Let me get clear with my question, my question is, the hundred and eight, a hundred and eighty days is a six-month period. Is that for completion of the construction?
Yes. And that's already in the ordinances up there, already into effect.
I'm not saying it's not possible.
It's there, it's there, I, I looked at, it's not really a big project. It's not a big project.
I don't want to delay it at all.
No, okay, well, and, and, uh, I, I've seen this before, I've seen the same type of thing. Takes about thirty days, it'll be back from DEP. It'll surprise me if it isn't. I saw another one just like that happen out here, and it was back to thirty days for them people to get it permitted.
Yeah.
Okay?
All right, I have a question on that one. When that module comes back, that comes to the township office or to the municipal authority office?
I'm, most likely it'll come to the township side.
All right, and you will notify the municipal authority?
Yes.
All right, because on page three of their agreement, on section eight, says the authority shall notify developer that work may be started. Work shall not start until such notification is given by authority to developer. So that information will need to be passed along.
It's the same day I get it.
Same day.
And if I may, just a point of clarification for those who don't know, because we sat through this approval process with the authority since night two thousand and nine, as you said, Mr. Holman. The reason there was no time limit placed by the authority was it never, it never came up in, as a request on their part or ours.
I had a point that I've told them, pardon, what they have in place.
So many things, so many things were, I mean, so many things were, were tossed back and forth primarily within the authority itself. That is not a blame, it is simply a matter of fact, the record, the minutes will show, will show. They debated amongst themselves on, on many aspects of this little system.
I understand that.
And, and every time they debated, um, and they had to work, work out, on one or two situations that involved Mr. Morrison. But often as not, it was an internal matter to be discussed with themselves and their engineer, and each of those deliberations, again, without blame, took months. So the years went by, it wasn't, uh...
I believe that last plan, the plan that we had, I believe the engineer had approved in March of two thousand twelve, and we had heard nothing until this past fall, when we were pushed to sign an agreement.
Who pushed you to sign the agreement?
Right here.
Mr. Morrison, Mr. Rash.
The agreement to get before the authority, I wanted the authority, was when Mr. Wagner sent the letter out and contacted you that we got a building sitting down here, we eat label, that we're not doing anything, we're in it without an occupancy permit. They only had a permit to build the footers, and we got an agreement from Rock to say that. But he wanted to build the whole building. And so we're just sitting here doing what we want, we're running our business out of that building, we're doing everything, by golly, in violation that everybody else in the township has to comply with. And so the generation started, and the first thing you needed is an agreement with the authority. I went to the authority and asked them to expedite the agreement. And I will expedite it on this part to get it into DEP. If I have to take it down and go to DEP myself to get you that approval as fast as possible. And I made that statement to you, you, Mr. Bun, and Mr. Wagner, over there in the room that night. Let's get past, everybody pointing the fingers and blaming everybody why we're here today, let's get it done. And here's the opportunity, you're at that point, you're at the crisis point, it can now be done. It's just that simple. We're finding that there's crossroads.
I have no problem.
Okay?
I, I don't understand, this is understanding here, why would I not want to do that? I'm the one that brought it up, I'm the one initiated and wanted to be hooked on this, I don't see.
I guess maybe for the same reason you built an entire building when you didn't have the right to, Rock. And I'm not going to get argumental about it, we could go here all night, let's move on and get the project done. I've done more than my share, I feel, trying to get this thing off base to settle over there with you, Mr. Wagner, and Mr. Bun, and offer to you what had to be done. And finally, everybody, Mr. Mellem, you sat there, well, Mr. Holman, what do you have? And I remember Mr. Wagner's comment, gee, it's, it's strange that the township supervisor can resolve this issue of what has to be done while the solicitors are arguing about it.
That was a very, that was a very helpful meeting.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
Well, I said it at that meeting.
Thank you, that's right, thank you. I did the best I could for you to get it off base. And I appreciate you getting those plans back and those drawings back, and, and, come on, it's time. You've done it quick and you got them back.
I don't know how many times we've, we've redone those damn plans for that.
Well, we're past that now, let's get the project done.
All right. Question, Henry, question, Henry, is there going, is there a requirement to have the plans recorded before the construction can begin?
When those plans come back with the, with the project or whatnot, Helen will have to record those plans.
Okay.
And the way it is set at the present, and once that plan's recorded, then your violation that you created, Rock, goes away.
Yes, yes.
And then, we don't have no alternative, you can sit there for five years unless I bring it to your attention, everybody brings it to your attention, the project's going to have to be done, five years down the road, Rock can say, I got an approved plan, I ain't doing it. Okay?
Hey, Henry, I'm spending.
See, you know what I'm saying? So let's, so let's, let's everybody agree to get, you agreeing to do it, what are we arguing about? Nothing, nothing right now. It's taken care of as far as I'm concerned. I put that in form of a motion, that we attach a hundred and eighty days, the second is there. Okay, motion made with a second, all those in favor get their consent, we're signing it. Do I hear a motion to sign?
I thought that was part of your motion.
Okay, well, it is part of the motion, if you want a separate one, I'll.
No, I don't want a separate one, I don't need it.
That is part of it, that will be signed and in the mail.
Yes.
If you want me to hand carry it, I will.
The same planning module we did two thousand and nine, and Helen prepared this out. Only thing we changed recently was the extra EDU, I believe, from ten to eleven.
Yeah, I think so.
Well, you paid for one EDU and you got, I think, nine out there on capital reserve. Am I not correct, Rock? I think that's about right.
I think it's eleven.
You paid for one EDU, that's all.
Yeah, but it changes our, changes our calculations.
Yes.
Henry, your, your hundred and eighty days, that starts as of tonight, or it starts?
No, as the signing or the completion of this module, when it goes in.
When you get the permit back from the EDU.
Yes.
And if you go over and take a look at the municipal authority, there is another a hundred and eighty day thing. If all this work was done up front and all approved, and they come in to get their permit, you have a hundred and eighty days to get on the project. It's already in place. I didn't create that, I'm not making that up, it's over there.
It's in the rules and regs.
Huh?
It's in the rules and regs.
It's in the rules and regs of the municipal authority. Unbeknownst to me, until you get to digging, as what do we got here, what are we missing? And so you spend, Lee, you and I went through books when we were there, by golly, had dug through crap, how much time do we spend on it? It still, has to be done still, because people do forget over a period of time, what's there? Never being on the authority, did not know that someone doubt was there. So I went looking, I found it. Okay.
The, the module, I'm, I'm not familiar with the module.
Yeah.
But I knew there had been discussion about open trenching across and pouring across. Is that all squared away and, that's not a holdup?
No, that's all.
I just, I was trying to make sure there's no holdups.
I won't, I won't bore everybody by going through the, the ad nauseam of the last five years of this thing. But what the gentleman mentioned, it was just one of many, many things we had to be ironed out, how many trees to save? Can we go off the easement, the authority's easement across, across Concord Estates? I mean, it goes back to, ah, 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 ah. So the answer is yes, everything's been aired out. It better be.
I think it is, okay? The authority side of it's altogether different, we have the issue over here with the building sitting there, it shouldn't be there.
And the only thing I would like to also say is that, that our client, my client did not drag his feet, that's all I can say.
Well, I can't get argumental with municipal authority who did and who didn't, all I know is, I think it's resolved, let's move ahead.
Right.
Okay? Oh, my, see what else we have here?
Nothing on the planning commission.
Okay? Uh, zoning reports, okay?
Okay.
Taken care of that, sort of enforcement officer reports? I would like to thank Mr. Mellem, by golly, for the comment, that was a very informative meeting, is what got everything off base, and I thank you for that.
It was well deserved.
Thank you. Okay, Penn Township Park and Rec Board report?
Nothing at this time, we don't have to report.
Penn Township Municipal Authority, we will grant extension?
Yes, we received a letter from the authority asking us to grant a sixty-day time extension for the sewer connection order.
Okay, I make a motion that we grant that sixty-day extension.
I will second that.
Okay, motion made with a second, all those in favor get their consent, we're signing it. Eyes have it, so ordered.
Okay.
Secretaries report?
Okay. Uh, first thing I have is the disclosure statement from, from PSET, that's where our pensions, same thing as last year, they just want us to adopt them. Need a motion for that.
All right, I make a motion that we accept the disclosure statements for the pension.
I'll second, all those in favor get their consent, we're signing it. Eyes have it, so ordered.
Okay, um, the school district census. Uh, the tax collector called me and informed me that Sisquinita wants the county to pay for, um, the census. And that the county has not, as of right now, made a decision, yes or no on that. Their problem is that they'll get adjustments from Barbara, that she gets through the mail and other areas. And then they get the census from the school, and the census from the school is incorrect. If they, if someone doesn't send back a census, they just leave the old stuff on it. The problem is if they don't get the census, they don't get the new kids who graduated for the recapping occupation. Therefore, we don't get them on the tax rolls and our recent, income on the taxes are lower than what they could be. Barbara wanted, wanted me to ask you if you would consider writing a letter to the county, asking them to consider purchasing the census from them. I have not received a call back from Cheryl at the school district on the cost of the census yet.
That was my next question.
Yeah. Um, Brian had asked me earlier if it was possible to get our, just our township, it is possible, and she didn't give me that cost yet either. That's where, that one stands.
I have no problem, Helen, trying to get that information because it's, it's money involved.
Yes.
For the township.
Okay.
Go ahead, here is second to that motion.
What's the next one?
For us to send a letter to the county, ask them for the census.
Ask them to purchase the census.
Purchase the census.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made with a second, all those in favor get their consent, we're signing it. Eyes have it, so ordered.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
Okay, the next item is the newsletter, articles by the eighteenth, please. Remind yours, CC. The last thing I have, well, this, next thing I have is the CD resolution for Members First. We need to adopt the resolution and sign the signature cards. Application, signature cards and all that good stuff. It's in there somewhere. Should be, that's actually the third page back.
Government's backing that resolution.
Yes, that one.
Go here, a motion to adopt the resolution in regard, the CD resolution.
I don't know if we adopted, and who signed, you, Helen, or?
You three need, I need your signature, Sarah.
We adopted, signed the resolution.
Okay. Motion been made to adopt and sign the resolution, all those in favor get their consent, we're signing it. Eyes have it, so.
Who's going to second?
Oh, I'm going for a second. Those made with a second, all those in favor get their consent, we're signing it. Eyes have it.
Okay, the last thing I have, um, the cap tax. Okay, the last thing I have, um, the cap tax is having a meeting, had a meeting on December twelfth. The executive board brought up a possible change of bylaws on how they would do day-to-day business. Um, they're thinking about having a nine-member board who would do the day-to-day business during the week, or during the year, and then on, like, January, they would have all the members come in and vote. The, um, reason is, we're having a hard time getting members, members there, not so much Perry County members, but the Junianna and Huntington County members coming in. I included the possible, the proposed changes, uh, they're asking us to get any comments, decisions, anything on it to them. By the, where am I looking at, sixteenth, I know it's not a lot of time, but I was gonna give you this in December. If it's possible, if you can get something to me, if you have any comments or questions about it, by the fifteenth, I, I can email the, that to them. We have another meeting on the twenty-third, while this will be discussed.
Can you comment, can you board them?
Well, let them read it.
No comments back by the fifteenth?
Fifteenth.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay, Helen, thank you, we will now move up to police report.
Engineer.
Police, how to report, okay?
Engineer report first.
Well, the engineer report, Max is not here tonight because there wasn't anything on the agenda when he goes to the engineer.
You have.
And so, he waived it, waived his money.
No, he hadn't appointed, reappointed him yet, he wouldn't come for.
No, he comes for the cookies.
Maybe he's not good at that. Okay, we have before us the police report, I had talked to Mr. Captain Carlson, our police chief here, uh, every now and then I get something happens, and it's a wonder I even got the report from tonight, because they got pretty much interfaced after last month's meeting. Uh, I sat here and, and I listened to what Lee had to offer in regards to a computer program, for forty-some hundred dollars.
Forty-five.
Huh?
Forty-five hundred.
Okay, I got a computer program, and it was explained by Mr. Pickles what it was for, okay? I write down the office the next day, I didn't know nothing of it, and I listened to the tapes, it said, I think it said, you said it was paid bill for forty-five hundred dollars. Never knew bill came in through to her, never did anything come anywhere to anybody in regard to this program. This program was a lender into that police department to see if they wanted to use it, and what it was, was exactly what Mr. Pickles said. That was in a folder, never came out of that office, never, by golly, has been discussed at a Duncan meeting, this meeting, or anywhere else. Where did you get your information, Lee, in regards to that, because it stayed in that office, never was put out on this floor anywhere? Where did you get the information about that, and the amount of money, Lee?
The budget.
Budget what?
It was in one of the budgets that you had put out.
Two thousand thirteen? Didn't mean it would be paid now.
It was talked about.
Then that's, that's not even for that.
It was talked about it on the budget meetings, he had asked about, it was listed as computer and supplies, and the response was software.
Yeah, and so that, that item was in there for two thousand thirteen, is yet to take place this year, but the statement was made, and it's on the tape, that this was paid in November. Now, we all listened to it, and that particular item and that particular thing never come out of that office, and neither are they using it, and neither was there ever an expenditure for it. I'd just like to know where the information came from, how it got out of that office, it was never put before the board for payment or anything else.
I'd have to listen to the tape because I'm going by what was on the budget.
Well, you're, you're.
Henry, it was on your budget.
It's on our budget, two thousand thirteen, forty-five hundred dollars, it says nothing about that program in particular until you asked about what it was for. That is, that, that forty-five hundred dollars can be used for anything of the upcoming year for their budget, you asked about a particular one that said it was to be paid in November. My question is, that if they accepted that, the first payment for that, from the paper I saw, was due in November. A program that they haven't used, that they're not gonna use, and it was a loaner to them just to see how the setup was.
I'd like to hear the tape.
It's available. I just question where the information came from.
Henry?
I do nothing about.
I have a budget in front of me, I asked a question about a forty-five hundred dollar software package, I asked a question what it was for, did I recollect? I don't recall saying that it was paid for in November, but.
You can come and listen to it, Lee. I just question.
I will go listen to it.
Okay?
But the question was, what was the forty-five hundred dollar package, software package for?
And when you mentioned November, that was the key, that it was for last year, not for the upcoming year, there is forty-five hundred dollars in there, you mentioned November. And that was the key, where did that come from, that this was to be paid for in November? Here's the question, Lee, I would like to know.
Well.
But nevertheless, when I see something like that, I'm, I wanna know why.
Are you accusing me of going into the police department?
No, I'm not doing that, I just asked, maybe someone else saw something and didn't, or maybe said something, I don't know, but I know that if that's the case, and I know, it never came before me, and I didn't know it, you can accuse me of anything you want, but you can't accuse me, by golly, not looking after the money in the township, and expenditures, by golly, they're not approved or don't come before the board, that's what got me. And I, I don't hesitate to question these guys on those particular issues.
Well, that's why I've said you should question it also, I'd like to know what the forty-five hundred dollars is.
I brought it to the floor, it's here for discussion, and you need, you need to come in, we need to talk about it, if you wish.
So, what is the forty-five hundred dollars for that?
What's that?
What is the forty-five hundred?
Whatever they wanna use it for their programs, or any, any necessaries on it for the upcoming year. It's a, is it not a generality thing for in the budget for forty-five hundred dollars for the coming year?
Yes.
It's not designated for anything, it's no different than, I plugged thirty thousand dollars in there for road maintenance, and only spent twenty.
Okay.
And I can buy culverts and tar.
Because if in the budget it mentions that it's forty-five hundred dollars for a particular package.
But it.
But it doesn't.
Doesn't.
It doesn't.
But in the meeting, but in the meeting, it was asked, what was it for, and what was brought out, was, it was for a package in that budget meeting, when it was, it was for a package. What they clarified, was it the package you guys were on loaner, or was it just for future expenditure?
They didn't say we paid for it, and I don't, I don't like, I don't like the indication that it was indicated it was, because it wasn't.
Okay, if you would follow me, please, Henry.
Yeah.
If you would. My understanding from the meeting was that it was questioned, what is this package? What is, what is this package that's forty-five hundred? It wasn't explained at that moment that it was a package.
And that's for the upcoming year.
That was for the upcoming year, but it wasn't explained like that, it was explained at that time, and nothing against the officers, it was my understanding also, that it was for a package for keeping records, keeping track of, reporting stuff to the state, reporting stuff to, you know.
And we asked for the website ID, and you now have the website that that was sending the information to.
So, we assumed from that, from that explanation, that forty-five hundred dollars was for a package to be bought this year, I didn't know it was on loan, I didn't know we were trying it out. I thought it was something maybe you experienced by working at Harrisburg Police Department, it was something they were using, you liked it, presented it, you know, I, I mean, I'm all for making things easier and have you guys on the road more, you know, so.
I, I have absolutely, you know, if it wasn't in one of the records that you passed out here, there's no way that I would've known you had a software package that was forty-five hundred dollars.
Let's see if it was, it said paid November. That's what got me. I didn't see no bill for that in November, and what I understand on the tape, I think you'll find, and I listened to it, and I listened to it a half a dozen times, a bill paid in November. That's what threw it up here, if I'm wrong, I'll stand corrected right here in front of everybody. That's what brought my attention to it. An unauthorized motive for payment out here that should've been, that I never saw a bill for, and never come through this township, so they got questioned. That being said, I think we beat this dead horse enough, you know how I feel about it? And I had the question.
I'll tell you how I feel about it, if you're accusing me of something.
No, I'm not.
Okay.
I just asked, how you got the information?
I only go by what comes off of those budgets, we're looking at them, we're reviewing them, and we're asking questions.
Okay, but the budget was for two thousand thirteen, got a different timeframe here, I'll leave it at that, Lee, that's the way I see it, that's what I heard, I did question it, okay? Are you going to use Clifford and Pickles, are you going to use that program?
No.
No.
Was any software purchased in two thousand twelve?
Um, antivirus programs.
Well, antivirus.
Various different programs for updating, to run our server or.
But no new.
But no.
Programs for our use.
And in general ballpark number of what you think you spent on the programs that weren't purchased?
Let's see, they weren't purchased, they were updated, um, where are you here?
Would you have one of the draft, the drafts that they were reviewing at one of the budget meetings that showed the year-to-date versus the expenditures, what was the, because there, I know there's a software line on there.
Yes, there is a soft, well, it's a commu, it's computer.
Thanks, Rock, Mr. Melon.
It's called a computer systems account, township, uh, accounts. Okay, that was, that was for the one in the beginning of the year, the actual computers and the server.
Server, ser, I mean, it's all equipment.
Yeah.
The only thing I'm seeing is the virus protection for four hundred and nineteen days.
Yes.
And the server was, that would be worth forty-five hundred dollars?
Yes, yes.
And that was purchased last year.
The server itself, yeah, but that was purchased.
Beginning of two thousand twelve.
Yeah, that was back in January, February, some time.
That was actually out of two thousand eleven's budget, the server.
Right, but the, when you upgraded the software and server.
A question I believe that was asked, and correct me if I'm wrong, what is the forty-five hundred dollars, uh, software package for?
It's.
Am I correct with that question? That was the question that was asked at that last meeting?
Not from what I heard on the tape, no.
I had to hear the tape.
Yep, you have, you have to hear the tape, Lee.
Because I can guarantee you, I'm not putting your office in around, and I know you got cameras here, you can go pull your cameras and check them out, but I didn't dream that up either.
Okay, and in regards to this, I'd like to offer another comment before I let the, the officers here take a look at it. All through the years, I've heard the question, how many police officers on, we've always answered that, and are we twenty-four seven? Since July the first, we have a police officer out there, twenty-four seven, three shifts, round the clock. All you have to do is make a call into the county any time of the day, and they'll tell you there's an officer clocked in. Prior to that, when we didn't have people out there, and we had part-time shifts, yes, as in the practice of the past with Alan, Halk, and everybody else, there was a schedule submitted to the state police up here, so that they could cover the off time when there's nobody there, okay? When you went twenty-four seven, there's no longer scheduled given the state police, because there's no need for it, we have people here, one o'clock, twenty-four seven. They call in, they call out. It's not twenty-four seven worth of hours or whatnot, and then we're missing a shift in the middle of the night, and have made up elsewhere. The thing has bounced out at the present time, on the first of July, we have had officers on three shifts, round the clock. There has been no missed calls, there has been no calls, when there was a call, come in to Penn Township for an officer that we haven't been available since the first of July. I often heard here about what we have in reports and et cetera and whatnot, so I asked them to prepare a report, finally at the end of the year. You may find it interesting enough that, I, I asked them whether I could put this out on the floor, and they have no problem with it, in the Duncan Borough for dispatch calls, December was seventy-one, for the year total, six-eighty-three. So many calls we have for the year, dispatched calls. That's for Duncan Borough, dispatched calls in Penn Township, seventy-seven in Duncan, I mean, in Penn Township, seven-hundred-and-forty-three in Penn Township. Vehicle accidents, December three, year-to-date, twenty-eight for the Borough. Vehicle accidents, Penn Township, one in December, forty-three for the year in Penn Township, okay? Assistant ambulance, thirteen for the Duncan Borough in December, eighty in the year's total, assist ambulance in Penn Township, eighteen for December, one-hundred-and-seven for the year. You have crime reports, twenty in December for Duncan, one-hundred-and-sixty-three for the year in Duncan. Crime reports, Penn Township, twenty-eight for December, two-hundred-and-four for the year in Penn Township. Arrests, you have seven in December, Duncan Borough, forty-five year-to-date, arrest in Penn Township, fourteen, one-hundred-and-four for the year. Traffic citations, nine in the Duncan Borough, for the year, two-fifty-seven, traffic citations, Penn Township, one-hundred-and-thirty-four December, sixteen-hundred-and-twenty-five for the year in Penn Township. Fellas, we got a fifty-fifty budget down there, it should be sixty-forty in their favor, they are subsidizing this township with their money to put a patrol out there for the township that has the most out there, and we're way over than what they are with the calls that's down there. They have the foot patrol here, twenty-three, eighteen hours and four minutes, year-to-date in Duncan, forty-four, two-hundred-and-sixty hours, four minutes, okay? Of course, you don't have the foot patrol in Penn Township, but you do have parking violations in Duncan, zero for December, but thirty-six for the year-to-date, not something we don't have here. All these other calls and all these major, we are way, way over in Penn Township for calls that go out than you are in Duncan. Those are the facts, that's how they record, they keep in the computer, they can pull them up for me at any time, where we're at. And I just wanted to let it go, for one year, only six months have we had twenty-four seven. Our revenues are thirty-some, probably thirty thousand, or thirty-some thousand, that came into township, goes into general fund. And it seems there's plenty of bad boys out there, that could easily double for another Taking an awful lot of beating, why, we got police officers out there, fellow, there's an awful lot of things that come out of the street, and awful lot of good things done, nobody else will give them credit, I'm gonna speak for them. This time, I turn the police reporter with the two officers here who sat through this screening, and apologize for the length of it, and some of the conversation that took place to all.
The monthly reports were turned in, everything's in the year, year-to-date, we did a compilation of the, the whole year for what we did. And, uh, looks good. Like Henry said, we're only six months with twenty-four seven, so, and we had thirty thousand, I think, in citations, I think totals sixteen-hundred and, plus two thousand citations.
Could I have a copy of that report, please?
Sure. Yeah, we'll make it up. We still have six, uh, part-time and two full-time, and they're off probation as of last Saturday, so it'll be, uh, their part-time officers that, that have all their training, that they needed to be off probation, of course, training continues every year, we have state-required training, plus qualifications and stuff like that, so that, that all goes on, all during the year, if any classes.
Question with the training, have they been trained on your, um, nudes, B-detection equipment, you set up your polos and they're, um.
The Enrad?
Yes.
Enrad.
Have they been trained in that yet also?
They've used it, the only two that are actually trained in it are the chief and I, and we have to wait for good weather, that's an instrument that we only use in good weather.
They're trained in the stopwatches and the.
The VAS car and the tracker.
Because that generally takes two people to run that current.
On what, the Enrad?
Yeah.
No, one person can run the Enrad.
Sure.
In fact, it's pretty easy for one person to do it, because they, they can sit down the road and pull people right in, they don't have to actually chase them, and they can dictate where they.
So, they don't have to be sitting right there where the equipment's set up, they can be down the road for.
Well, you, yeah, that's the, that's the reason to be down the road, so you can watch the equipment and then pull them in as they, as they come down.
And there was talk, I believe, last month of increasing the rate for part-time officers once they complete probation.
Yes, and, and also, there's an increase from, I believe it's fourteen-twenty-eight an hour, twenty-three an hour?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight an hour, yeah, and it, that, that was, would've been increased had they been off probation in, last year to six.
28 an hour, yeah, and it, that was, would have been increased had they been off probation in, last year to 1,650. This year, the increase is, is up to 1,750 in the, as per the contract, so they'll just go from, from off probation last Saturday. This, the pay we're in now, now will be calculated at $17.
And is there a 2% increase with the budget for that also?
No, that's, that was contracted for 1,750, yeah.
So the 2% for employees did not include the officers?
No, it didn't.
No, no.
And if I may justify that, you know, I know you guys were released out there last night at 12:30 because I fell asleep and saw the Christmas lights flashing through my window.
Again. Make some kind of purchase. Stop out and say hey.
I did, I missed it.
Anything else to the police report?
Yeah, I'd like to add something that the chief didn't. I'd like to thank the board of supervisors as well as the, I don't know what their proper title is over in Duncan, but both boards have worked with us immensely during this year. There's been some obstacles to overcome, I believe we've overcome them. And as we've been stating all along, that we've been trying to progress the department, not only with computers, but with equipment, but also with, with officers that do a good job, that love what they do, that are well-educated, and that is one of the reasons why we were pushing, to push the salary up a little higher, so we can keep officers. Right now, with the six part-timers, we are looking at two of them being top of the list in two other departments for full-time positions that we could end up losing. And that's something that we want to get into a position that we're not facing month in and month out. We'd like to get a, a group of officers up here that like it up here, that work to our standards, that are friendly, that don't antagonize the public, like some police departments are known to do. And I just want to thank both boards of supervisors and councilmen, is it, what are they called, everyone?
Commissioners.
Commissioners, whatever, for their help. It's been, it's been an interesting year.
Can I ask a question? Do you think a, if, a staffing mod, you know, to try and staff the police department with part-time officers is a reasonable staffing model?
Are you asking my opinion?
Well, yeah, in other words, is this, is this really gonna, gonna, gonna work? In other words, the, the average person that's going to have a family, the officer, is going to want full-time work for, for purposes of, of, of benefits and, and, you know, just having, having a full-time salary, okay? So if we're going to be working with, off of this part-time staffing structure, we almost have to assume that we are going to be having a revolving door.
Well, not necessarily. A lot, a lot of officers are married and their wives work, and they have the, the package for healthcare, and then they just want to be able to bring in enough. They, most, most officers want to be officers because they like the job, not, not for the money as, as, as bad, but, but, but also, I mean, they're, they already have, like, if, if their wife's a state worker, or their, or their husband, depending on whatever, they, they have their package already, and then they're just bringing in, you know, an extra salary, which is.
Yeah, okay, I, I, I'm just, but I'm, you know, is that, is it, should we expect that we are going to have, still have a revolving door because of that? I mean, or, or do you believe that we can get a, a fairly stable part-time staff?
I believe we can get a fairly stable. Now, when I say part-time staff, I'm saying we can probably get an 80% stable staff, because you're always going to have one or two that are looking for the full-time positions, they do want the vacation benefits, the medical benefits and everything that goes along with it. However, right now, our economy is helping us quite a bit. If you look at all the police departments across the area, there aren't that many hiring anymore. They're actually cutting, Mechanicsburg cut a position, Lower Paxton cut a position, um, other than this. Lancaster cut, the only, the only ones that I know that are actively hiring is the city.
But they're down so low now.
They're down so low, and I don't know about jumping into a municipality that can't make payroll from one week to the next.
Well, I think if we look at a module, have you did a comparison, three full-timers versus six part-timers? And why I say that, it's important for retention, because if all of us know, it costs more money to train. That's where most of our expenses come, is that training period. So retention is most important to keep that, because basically what we're doing, we're training people to go somewhere else. So, so we're doing all the expense.
They're extremely valuable.
So looking at a module where you could compare three part-time, or three full-timers versus, I mean, take the six, make them three full-time, would it be more retention where we can keep it 100% retention or 99.9% retention? You know, versus we could lose two every year, use three every year.
Yeah, because there are some that prefer part-time work, because they're, they're either helping take care of the kids, or they have something else they do and stuff like that, but yeah, you're right.
And the reverse of that is, if I may interrupt, there's many, there's many, there's, there's a long list of officers sitting out there that you don't need to train, they've had the experience, but they don't have a job.
But this is, you know, like we got those officers.
And, and a whole lot of yards, and I will say that I take the opportunity to talk to the officers that we have. I know for a fact that we had one here that was offered a tremendous amount of money to go to another department over here, a part-time. Turned it down, said, I want, I don't want to work there, I want to work here, I like it here, and this suits me just fine, I'm not going, and they begged to get that officer. That officer's still here and said, no tension, Lee. I've talked to some of the other officers, young fellows that are out here, they like what they got. You have a core out here that say that they're going to stay, and you have a core out here of those that are looking, but they haven't got those jobs yet either. You know what I'm saying? So there, the, those options are out there, you can say, working module, it's only an assumption of what it's going to be at its best. So you can, you can play it whichever way you want to suit your needs, but it's not going to work, or you can play it, the yes, it will work. I believe it'll work.
And if it gets to a point where we're really starting to turn over, then, then, you know, we'd look into, you know, maybe a full-time, one more full-time position or whatever. But right now, it seems like, hey, we've had six for six months, and there are two that are practically number one on other, two other departments, but and the other ones are pretty much want to stay, and that, that officer that was offered a job elsewhere was offered increases several times before they, they filed the civil, let's just leave it alone, I said no.
When the pair of you come is part-time, had you envisioned that you would be in the prediction you're in now?
Nope, not at all.
I often, I thought of that, it's how you.
We came up here wanting 24 hours a week, and that's it.
Yeah, if that's what, it totally amazed me, you, you had bumped into what you got bumped into.
Somebody strong-armed us.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering if you go home at night and wonder what the night you didn't do.
These two were part of the original program, Paul brought them in here when we were looking at exploring it for 24/7, and they would have been part of that as part-time. Paul resigned, left it open here, he had this commitment, he had worked so far into it, but so much to it in it. And, and believe me, nobody was in a tougher spot than I was, because all this talk about having 24/7 with Duncan took us six months for something that was fully prepared and ready to go on that, that, that January. That never got done by the past. I almost had an awful lot of egg, and I had some egg on my face over that, but I think it done, thanks to these two, they pulled it together, and we got the officers and got what we needed, and got it in effect by July the 1st. Took six months to put that together, when there were six months' work on having it ready for January 1, and it never happened. Kind of embarrassing. I laid a lot out there in the line stating it was going to happen, but when the time come, it wasn't ready. So, they, they deserve a lot of credit, by golly, for what they done, the whole force out there, and, and, and I, I follow it, I watch it as close, by golly, as when I can with the officers or what out there, that it is what it is, and it's not something different. That's all I can offer for it. They need a word of thanks for the job they do. Every badge is on your shoulder, you're a target for some wacko in today's world, just look around. That being said, if there's nothing else for the police report, the solicitor's not here, Richard Wagner had another meeting at 7 o'clock in Millerstown that he had to be at. That leaves for you the permit report, which you have in front, any offer comments on the permit report?
No.
Okay. You have correspondence, invite to the Public Officials Day?
Yep, that's on the 10th of this week. The other item is the letter resignation for Mr. Saltis.
Okay, I talked to Paul today about that. Uh, he was going to look around, he had some, uh, some people's names in effect, and I called him today, and he said he was out in Pittsburgh. And he apologized that he didn't get back to me, or he didn't get back to me and follow up. When I found out Paul's at Pittsburgh with his mother on her deathbed, losing her at the present time. So I apologized for even making the phone call to bother him, and he said it was perfectly okay. He offered his help in case of any emergency or anything for what we have leading up to any problems up here. But he does have his letter in here, he said he had 19 years, he's had some difficult problems. He said the family affair with what he's went through with, with health issues has taken a terrible toll on him. And I can understand that, I've been through that myself. So, that being said, I make a motion, we accept Paul's letter of resignation with thanks for the work that he done, and we need to look around, see what we have out there. Paul is going to get back with me, apologize with some names, and see if we can take a look out here for a new civil defense coordinator. It is another thankless job, it seems you never suit anybody with it all the time, but it is also an important job that this board of supervisors need to get in place. Jenny Addis.
Henry, I'll second your motion.
Yes?
On that, are the applications still in place from the individuals that you had considered the last time for the EMA? I believe you had three or four applications that you had acted on when Paul resigned while Randy was still here?
I did not get actual applications, that was all done at your level.
I don't recall, I, I, I have no idea, Jody.
Well, Carrie Nace was actually selected and appointed, she was just never put in, and then somehow.
No, no, she was put in, she just never showed up.
Okay, because I know there was, there was Carrie, and there was someone else that was, Win Harbaugh or anything, and then I thought there was a third individual that you were debating between. I'm just curious if you had.
No, there's, there's no application or anything that I know for at all, Jody.
No, not an actual application.
I remember you were handling it, Henry, but I didn't know if you had the physical file or what the.
That was, we, we had the word out there, we had a volunteer from the Nace girl, and, and we accepted that volunteer, by golly, for her to do it, and actually made the approval for her to fill in like that. And supposedly she got tied up, she couldn't make contact with us, got job out of the area, et cetera, and she had to give it, give it up. And Paul had, Paul was a little hostile about some things that took place, and rightfully so for what was said and what took place at that mount, at that meeting, and it was disgusting, and it was an awful lot of foul language used here, not by anybody on this board that caused him to resign.
I was here for that, I'm curious what happened, if those other individuals, if they would still consider those prospects, or if they even consider them still interesting at this point.
I don't know of any other prospects, Jody, I couldn't name you by any, and I don't know of any applications for them.
Okay.
Pretty much word of mouth.
Yeah, okay?
Calling for the question, acceptance of.
Paul's resignation, yes. Okay? I asked for approval to accept his resignation.
And I seconded that.
Seconded, and all those with favor give it to the same, same, I have it so.
The last thing I have is the Geniata Sue Each Committee. They are a committee that oversees administering Act 537 stuff, permits, collections, and that, and they want to, they would all welcome the operating to discuss with you guys their work.
They would like to collect fees for us. Okay? Thanks for the correspondence.
Mr. Holman?
Yes?
Before you adjourn, can, can I just speak just for a minute? I know it's getting late, I'd like to go home and eat supper myself, I'm starved. But with the recent shootings in Newtown, Connecticut, I keep hearing all over the media, resources, townships, the city of Harrodburg are looking at placing ordinances to restrict the Second Amendment. Has there been any discussion? Has there been any, um, talk among yourselves or with the law enforcement officers here about ordinances to restrict our Second Amendment rights? Where guns can be carried, or where you can have them, or et cetera, et cetera?
I'm pro-Second Amendment, and that was one of the questions I asked them when they were hired, and every other police officer that we have on here is pro-Second Amendment, believe in that right. And I have no, no endeavor, by golly, to take that from all Biden citizens. Not at all, do I?
That's very important to me.
Very important to me. That was one of the questions these guys were asked, everybody that come before me on the interview is asked, how do you feel about our Second Amendment?
And the second thing I would just like to address here, earlier this evening in the meeting, you addressed about making corrections to errors that have been published by the citizens group. Me personally, I can say I've never visited their site, but I have read the Duncan Record, Perry County Times, and I've also read, um, the Duncan Record, Perry County Times, and the Newport paper. Now, I understand that they're all published pretty much by the same people, so if you buy one, you get all the same information in all three. But there's been letters to the editors from citizens of our own township that have spoken things in error also. Looking back, I've, since I've come into the township, I've gone back, as far as the last two years, reading has been very daunting and very, sometimes tiresome, going back in all those notes. But I hear errors and I see errors that are printed by people's opinions in those three periodicals. So, I think it's only fair that if you're going to correct the Penn Township citizens group and the things that they publish, it's only fair also to set the record straight with anybody that's placing a letter to the editor that's being published that's a lot more broader spectrum of reaching people in our township and our county than a simple little website that's not advertised. So I would ask you if you would consider amending your earlier, um, motion to include periodicals in literature that's in the Perry County area, such as those three papers?
You know, the, and I guess I would tell you that I probably have a stack of Duncan Record papers at home that I've kept, of all those things that's been said about me personally in there, and I never respond to none of them, I consider the source and let them go. Lot of them pretty harsh. A lot of them, by golly, come across Facebook and Penn Live and stuff where you're directly accused, and I have a lot of those too that's been pulled off. I consider the source and I ignore it. This is newsletter here, it has a preamble at the top what it stands for, and I agree with what they say's there. And that is directed in here, given to us, and it pertains to strictly what takes place with the supervisors at this meeting. Those issues you're talking about are generally over a whole township, a county, and et cetera.
But there have been articles that have been addressed to things that have taken place in this meeting that have been, that were incorrect also. Whether that, those individuals were here or not, I can't tell you, but I think it's only fair, granted, I'm, I've been a pastor and been a minister for 25 years, okay, so I understand that you can't please all sides of the table. Now, you get one side ticked off, you get the other side ticked off, you make one side happy, the other side's unhappy. I understand that, sir. And there's an old Jewish parable, one time there was a rabbi that, that came into a new, came into a synagogue, he was new and young, and, um, a lot of the older parishioners didn't like him, so they started spreading rumors about him and trying to discourage him. Well, finally, after all the changes he's made, some of the parishioners realized, hey, you know what, he's not as bad as we thought he was going to be. So one of the parishioners came to the rabbi and said, forgive me, I was wrong for what I said about you. So one of the parishioners came to the rabbi and said, forgive me, I was wrong for what I said about you. And the rabbi said to the parishioner, why don't you do me a favor? Take a pillow, go up to the highest mountain you can, I want you to rip that feather pillow out, throw it all over the place, and give a big scream and a big yell, and I'll consider forgiving you. So the guy's run up and did it, came back, says, Rabbi, I did it. He says, I feel so much better. And the rabbi said, I need you to do me one more favor, go pick up the feathers. He can't, and he can't pick up. So what I'm asking you, if you're going to if you're going to isolate one group that has a very small impact of people reading that in this township versus those three newspapers that have a larger audience, that that they write letters to the editors about things that happened in this meeting, they need to be corrected also.
I only care to correct those ones that's involved with that letter, because they're the ones that's directly affecting us.
But you're gonna do it via a newsletter.
Yeah, so because there's, you know, that 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 Citizens Group is out here, and then the person that don't get it. You know what's in the Citizens Group, and it gets all spread around. If you have a problem with the newspapers and you find corrections, you need to talk to that young lady right there, not us.
But the same thing, there's citizens that come to this meeting saying saying wrongful things also. They're saying wrongful things also. So therefore, when I see those articles, I bring them to your attention for you to put them in the newsletter to correct what they're saying is incorrect also. I'm just asking for fairness. If you're going to isolate one group.
You're not isolating.
Well, yeah, you're you're pinpointing the Penn Township group. There's also other people that putting up to the letter to the editors about what's being said in these meetings that are incorrect also. I've gone back and I looked at the minutes over the last two or three years, trying to figure out, where is these people getting this stuff?
You know what? I've been to the Patriot News, to the Dunkanen Record, and many a time to many one of them. Never did I ever get a retraction on anything of anything that was wrong. Never, never, and I have done it. And so I wish you luck in your endeavor to those people to do the same. This young lady here, it is about as fair as anybody I've ever seen.
But these are letters that are being written by citizens of Penn Township.
Okay, well, and and other county ones, you know, wide all all over. If you're going to, how I I see those letters, I haven't seen anything in there that I thinks wrong. Your determination of what you thinks wrong, or may affect you or somebody else, I may not see it that way.
No, it's factual. I can look at articles written in the in the newspaper to the editor, they're published, and I can go back and look at the minutes.
Directly affect on this township. Then we don't respond. If it was bad, I would, and I'd do it here at the meeting to make a part of the minutes.
But my question is, why are you now all you pick? So why can't just let the Penn Township group go? Because they're no better than the people writing the editor on the paper?
Now, you totally missed the point. You can say what you want to, this needs responding to, because it's gone over, over and over and over. And I asked before not to let it happen, I have made some corrections here very politely, and said that they were an error. And as long as I don't stand up here and defend this board and everybody else, by golly, involved in it.
Well, correct, but but what I'm saying, these same letters, I can hear people at multiple standing in line repeating the same errors that were written to the editor, and that they were put in about wrongful stuff just being said and done.
They don't, why don't they do something about it?
But if you like, yeah, but the thing about it is, what else, then what does the newspaper do something about what the what the Citizens Group is writing?
Henry, I have a question for you. Any anytime that you had a problem with something that was in the Citizen Group newsletter, and you forwarded that information or that correction to the Citizens Group, was it retracted or changed in the next newsletter that came out?
Never heard a thing, never saw no change, Lee.
Really?
I believe it was.
Yes, sir, Jody. Nothing of any magnitude for the amount, so many of them are in there, I don't even respond to them anymore. This last one here, when I see it's directed in there, and some of them are directed towards me. And they're wrong, and I come to the point, I am going to defend myself.
Oh, I I agree completely, but I do know, and honestly, I didn't read the last one, I should have. But I do know that I have seen a request that either you or Cece has made, where there's been a reissue of an article that clarified something.
When have I given a clarification on a Penn Town, uh, Citizens newsletter?
In the very beginning, there were a couple of points that you had pointed out that you were.
Wow, that gives me.
There is a request that you people put in for information to come back to the township, if you want to know that the township responds. Don't don't be confused that we're responding to something that's said wrong. That's an answer to something that you have asked for most of the time, because in that Citizens Group. There hasn't been no rebuttals, by golly, in regards to some of these other ones that go in there, Jody. There hasn't been, and I and I I think if it's only one a year, you know, I tend to address it. If it's more than that, got quite a list of them here that we need to take a look and review on this last letter. And I think that it warrants merit just as much as what it warrants merit for you guys to do the letter. And I and you know, I think it's time to end, I agree with Stanley, it's time to end the discussion.
I have to agree with what you're saying, by all means, if there are errors in there, please point them out. Again, I'm remiss in not reading that that list. But just like you indicated, that you're gonna go to the municipal authority meeting, and you're gonna make sure that they point out corrections for that meeting in particular. Is that a practice that you you can actually go in and ask that revisions be made to minutes?
Sure, and I've asked for that, and I was misquoted, Jody. And it's in our minutes, and it's approved, I just want to correct it. That's all.
But that is something that is acceptable, and if there is an issue with with the current minutes, it can be brought forward.
I want the option to go to the meeting, have it put in the minutes, and and offer the correction, by golly, as to what I said according to the tape and what was taken place. I think maybe it's error, but there's error in there, by golly, that that needs to be taken back, and I need to go there and correct it. It it was misquoting, by golly, it was unfair to Mr. Morrison, and his program over here will decide how that's worth it. But I went to that meeting only to transfer the information from the private meeting that they requested with Solicitor Wagner, Mr. Bont, Mr. Mellem, and Mr. Morrison. Because it was the night of the hearing, and we did not have enough people here, Jody. We did not have time to put three supervisors together. They asked for a meeting upfront, and they came and asked this board, is it okay if one of you sat in on this meeting to try to resolve this? I knew it was coming, and the whole nine yards. The one that had the information, who had the key, and the whole way through that, was me at the present time. Brian wasn't familiar with it, and neither was Cece. And so I sat through that meeting. And I sat through that meeting, and finally, Mr. Mellem said it right, it was productive. It was the one person, the one statement that got them off track so that they put this damn Oregon in fighting from two thousand nine over nothing, and the time comes, you want to point fingers here, you want to point fingers there, come on, if we want to do this, let's sit down and work this thing out. We're there, it's over with, it'll happen now. And and and, you know, I gotta give, Mellem, the the argument was heavy that night over there, but he thanked me there for the night. At least we're something.
Right, no, I, again, I agree with you, I'm just asking if that's something that is an option. I thought once a board made a motion and finalized minutes as final.
They're gonna finalize, but I gotta go, I got the right to go back there next month and tell them my side of it, say, I'd like this incorporated in the minutes. If they don't want to do it, they don't have to, but I would think that they would honor that request.
Okay. Okay, they won't change the original minutes, they'll put the additions in the new one.
They won't change the original minutes, but they're at least gonna put in what I had to say about it, especially if the tape backs me up on it, Jody.
Okay, that's all I needed to hear.
That's all, that's all this.
That's all I needed to hear, I appreciate that, Henry, thank you.
Okay, I make a motion for your adjournment.
One last thing. Turns out Stanley had the same minute, or the same notes that I had from the last meeting, abbreviated meeting. The question that I asked, and I read it right from the list, what was the forty-five hundred dollar software package for? I believe you're the one that said it was purchased in November.
I listened to the tape, Lee.
I listened to the tape.
Come in and listen to the tape.
I will, I will.
Come in and listen to the tape.
Mine wasn't here.
Well, I know you were.
I wasn't here.
You were.
No, I'm German.
I know you were, he was, and he's.
Okay, Mr. Mason made for German, I second, all those who favor give it the consensus saying aye.